Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we proceed. We have a business arising in Councilor Barton Nicky. Do you want to move so we can put the item on the phone?
Yes, Mr. Warden, I will move.
Okay, just a second if I, sorry.
Do you want that read?
Um, no, we don't need to read it. Uh, seconded by Councilor Robinson. And then Councilor Barton Nicky will have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think most of you are aware that a great part of Great County is experiencing significant challenges in our healthcare. Our hospitals are in need of equipment and capital investments. We don't know where we are with the province redesigning the lens, but the most significant problem we are facing is a shortage of primary care physicians. And when we're in a shortage of those, we elevate healthcare costs at all other levels. We divert people who do not have family doctors to emergency departments, and it's quite costly to do that. So I'm asking that this council look at what we do as county council, even though I realize that healthcare is a provincial remedy. We need to step up and look at what we're doing. We give as a county council significantly less than other neighboring counties to healthcare. I'm not suggesting that we need to match that. I'm suggesting that we do need to look at it. We need to have a good picture of where our needs are and perhaps moving forward to have a plan. So I have basically two asks in there and want us to direct our staff to bring a report on healthcare funding, including the spending from this council over the past ten years, current reserve funds, projected healthcare expenses, and comparison of healthcare level with our neighboring counties. And there is some urgency that hurt. I'm also asking that staff bring a report on recruiting and retention of primary care physicians by June twenty seventh, and I would suggest that that would be done not only by our staff but with those working in our county who are already engaged in this process. There's a great deal of knowledge out there, and maybe if we pool that knowledge, we can make some better decisions for Great County.
Thank you, Councilor Barton. If you want, I was looking at, acknowledging the second, Councilor Volly. When I was looking at this motion, I wondered, given that they're sort of two distinct requests, if we didn't want to deal with them separately. I'm in the hands of council, but it does strike me, and I wonder if staff might be able to give us some sense of what their thoughts are. I know Kim is not here. Kim, do you have anything to add about what you require of staff here?
Well, the first one for sure is that it's something that's been on my work plan anyway. We have two requests from, one from the Grecrews Health Services for their MRI and we had also the Collingwood General Marine Hospital Economic Request. So that, as part of the budget I stated, I'd bring back a report on that. So this has given me some additional clarity, I guess, on what council would like to see in that report in regards to past spending and stuff like that. So I believe I can accomplish that with that date. The other one, I'll have to work with Kim on that one. That's not in my, I would say, scope of, you know, understanding recruiting retention of primary care physicians. But, you know, with Kim's help, maybe we need to acquire a consultant or somebody to help us with this. I'm not sure, but I can discuss that with Kim further when she's back and we'll work away. I know Kim was aware of this motion, so we can work away with staff on this. I hope that helps.
Yeah, I think there is a question about whether that item number two would be within the scope of any of our staff, maybe outside help. Councilor Barton?
I have had discussions with Ms. Ray Hope about that item number two and as I have with two of the other members of council here who are well down that path. She has directed us to continue to engage those specialist parties beyond council staff to see if we can have them come to council and do a presentation on the state of affairs within great counties. So this is not necessarily in-house kind of task. We may need that expert voice to come to council so that we will know what next steps, if any, this council should do.
So, given your comments, would it be better that we, that that motion sort of reflect what you just said, that we engage or that we have outside experts come and talk to council about that? That we invite that expertise to come to this table?
Perhaps that would be more appropriate wording, and I'm happy to work with my council partners who are involved in this and with our C A O and come up with appropriate.
That would certainly be my suggestion. And if you're open to that, then perhaps I could give you some time to think while we have other speakers. I know Councilor Volly has some comments to make, and maybe we could wrap some sort of an amended second part. Councilor Volly?
I don't see splitting the motion going back to one of your questions, and I certainly want to look at it. I'm in favor of getting this report at that time. I may not be in favor of us taking on funding that should be provincial. That's a whole other topic. At the city, just going a little bit sideways, we've got a house that we provide for reasonable rent to the hospital to bring in doctors, which helps recruit them. We used to have a doctor recruitment committee that had some funding and stopped, and I can't remember exactly why. So what I'm actually standing is questioning why the June twenty seventh date? And why I'm questioning that is we've had an announcement in the last couple of weeks from the province that we may be funding more of the cost of the Bruce Gray Health Unit than what we have been in the past. We don't know exactly. I don't know exactly when that deadline is coming. I think that's probably going to have to be part of this report, talking in general about our spending on healthcare, et cetera. But I'm wondering if the deadline is going to provide a box that, that we won't know the answer on the health unit at the same time. I don't know if I'm getting my idea at that rate, but that's my question.
Councilor Keating? Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I'd just like to begin by thanking Councilor Barton for bringing this motion forward. I think it's really important and timely, thinking several of us were present on April the ninth at the Healthcare Forum, and we heard, at least I heard two things quite loud and clear that day, that the delivery of healthcare is changing. We know that. And it was also clearly emphasized that we all need to work together to solve these problems because I think all of us around the horseshoe are facing similar challenges in recruiting doctors. We've all got doctors who want to retire in our areas, and we're all trying to bring in new doctors, and we're all facing the same challenges because it's a competitive market and it's difficult. I've been involved, been pretty to the recruitment process in the municipality of Beaufort over the last four years, and I'm well aware of how very challenging it is to secure young doctors. So I think it's timely and important that we move forward with this, and I agree with Councilor Volly that we keep this motion intact. And to speak to the date of June twenty seventh, there is some urgency to this. We are, in our area anyway, in a crisis. We know that growth is coming to all of us, significant growth. I mean, in our own funnel in the municipality of Beaufort, we're probably looking at twenty-five hundred units over the next few years, and it's been determined that for every five hundred new homes, two doctors are required to cover the needs of those new residents. We're going to meet that challenge and take care of the applications that we already have. As long as our doctors are wish to retire, then we need to get moving. Kind of use of Councilwoman Queen's words, we need to get on with it, and we need to address this and determine just what our role is and how we're going to approach it and if a consultant is required or just how we're going to move forward. Thank you. Councilor Paulus?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I surely have pretty much said everything that I wanted to mention as well, but thanks to Councilor Barton for bringing this forward. It is very much on the front corner with many of us at the local level, but it does have a regional effect as well. We're all anticipating development, and we're all, this as the primary care access crisis that we are now in has a distinct impact on that that we can't ignore from the county level. I too attended that forum, the Grecrews Health Forum, on attracting and retaining primary care access workforce. And this not only includes family physicians, which are in very, very short supply, but it also has an impact on many other forms of primary healthcare providers, PSW being three predominant at P A O. So I very much support this motion going forward in its entirety. But I also wanted to speak to Councilor Volly's comments that we look at, including in terms of the research that's being done for the staff report, the recommendations that are coming out of this Grecrews Health Forum. There will be a number of recommendations coming out. There is a slide deck already prepared for that that may be useful in terms of starting the process. But the recommendations coming out of that forum, I think, will be very beneficial to all of us, and I look forward to working on that, and this may help us along this defining path for this council.
Okay, Councilor Barton?
I have reworded the second part, but before I do that, thank you for your support. There's also a direct link between the shortage of primary care physicians and our economic development and tourism all over the area. It is very hard to attract the skilled workers to our area when you still have to travel two to three hours to get to primary care physicians. In our area, we are estimating that over sixty percent of the residents in our large region there do not have primary care within our area. That's a growing trend because we don't have physicians who are getting younger and looking at full-time. So I have reworded that second part to say that staff work with appropriate community partners with expertise in healthcare recruiting to bring a report on recruiting and retention of primary care physicians by June twenty seventh. The recommendations of the Grecrews Health Forum, I would think, would form a part of that as well.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask you to, oh, you've got to get it so we can get it up on the board. Everyone see that, or shall I read that? Maybe I'll read it. The amendment says that the resolution we amended to state that staff will work with the appropriate community partners with expertise in healthcare recruitment to bring a report on recruiting and retention of primary care physicians by June twenty seventh, twenty nineteen. Councilor Robinson, are you?
I'm prepared to second that. Thank you, Warden.
Any further discussion? So we're voting on the amended motion. If it passes, then we won't be towards the original.
We'll have, we'll just bring the original back.
Ah, okay. So on the amended, Councilor Keating?
Just for clarity, in the sense of community partners, are you looking at the chief of staffs of different hospitals? Because they all have a parameter on each hospital. And certainly, I guess, do we need to, do we need to all, do we need to community partners? A lot of more for more clarity, or does that come next, Councilwoman?
Councilor Robinson?
Mr. Warden, I would suggest to you that there are experts throughout the county who attended and led the Grecrews Health Forum, who would be in touch with those chiefs of staff in the hospitals and have sometimes even more knowledge of the recruiting and retention process. We're in, we're in touch with some of the doctors at the major six universities in the province that are sending out the young doctors for their locums and practicants, and there's some expertise there too that we can borrow. I don't think we need to decline it. I think that Kim and others who are interested can bring a decent report forward to give this council a real good picture of what it takes to recruit and even more important, to retain most doctors in our area. It's not one step. There's also the retaining part of that, which we learned a lot about at the forum.
Councilor Keating?
I shouldn't have spoken on this. I was at the health forum myself. I know that Peter Wells, he was also, is that program, Rural Health. That's right. I'd say, I'd say he's probably a good person to start with. He's a guy that's dealing with, certainly, he's been, you know, based on that calling today for a long time, and we were just in one hospital. So just in a general injury count, we have the General Marine Hospital that's giving here. We have the Grecrews Health Services here, and then we have the Hanover Waterton. So this is over here. They're gonna have to make sure, encompassing, bring all those partners and all those key players into one forum to get the big picture and get that feedback on that. And I think it's also important, I'm not allowed to speak, but a doctor talked about the, I just moved it back to the economics or others, where the cost of living is much more reasonable here. I think that's an asset for attracting most doctors because there were other places in the province that certainly lack that factor. And I think you said that one version of sports, or talking about that, like, you know, the ability that to do a lot more and have a lot more recreational opportunities.
Mr. Reddman?
So this is not a new problem. I think it was about fifteen years ago that I was on the doctor recruitment committee with some members of the board at the hospital, and we struck up a subcommittee, and it was really for the spouses of the doctors because often it's the spouses who decide whether they're gonna be moving here or not. And so that was also an interesting piece of it, is trying to develop some sort of a package that would allow some assistance in job search and stuff like that for the spouses. And maybe that's something that could be agreed with the report.
Councilor Barton?
The physician that Councilman McQueen was talking about is Dr. Kim from Sheiluk. And we are engaging him. That's honestly, there's a group of partners within the room and outside of the room that will engage him about our local. He spoke in a very global way, but more about what Great County is needing and perhaps giving an answer to what do we need to do to get that medical school to send us more of their students so that we can do the fabulous work of showing them what we've got to offer in terms of a lifestyle, including what their partners can do. I appreciated that comment because I know that Bruce McLeer does have a plan now to support their growing workforce, and what they do is they attract the doctor and also dispense the law. So there are all kinds of little things that can come to this committee in terms of what we can do as council to support doctor recruitment and retention.
Okay, so we are voting now on the amendment. So I call a question. All who are in favor, do you mind? Any opposed? That is carried. And I vote on the main motion as amended. Understood? All right. We do still have a little bit of that in there, yes. So all who are in favor, and ready opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to allegations. Starting with Stuart Reed and Tanya Chu. Community Foundation Grecrews and East Grey Community Healthcare. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Scott. I'm Stuart Reed from Community Foundation Grecrews, and I'm very pleased to introduce our Bright Focus on Youth Report to you this morning. This report was released on April twelve. So this report comes about based on our 2016 vital science report, in which we found that a statistic on average less than sixty percent of Grecrews youth did not expect to find a job or live in the region after school. So this prompted the foundation to dig in a little bit deeper with two vital conversations with youth in our area of our health in November 2017. One was up at Wharton, and the other went down at Launchpad and Panel. And we talked to youth about issues that they saw as important in terms of their life here in Grecrews. And what came about were summary topics, issue clusters around lack of a regional transportation system, the need for a greater youth voice, a voice in decisions that affect their lives, the prevalence of substance use in our community, and the need for more support for mental wellness. So I'm just gonna show you very quickly the way the report looks. It is available for download online at our website, communityfoundationgrecrews.com. It starts off with a message from our presenting sponsor, R B C Future Launch. The presenting sponsor, of course, is, has dedicated a $500 million investment over the next ten years towards supporting youth and making youth better prepared for a changing workplace. And R B C support this report really brings the topic of youth preparedness and to the forefront of community discussion. We're very grateful for their support. So the report itself is done in a very lively way. It presents statistics that have been convened from various reports alongside quotes from youth that were taken in at the vital conversations, as well as features on projects that the foundation's currently funding that relate to the topic. And we also have some pop-up features on the lower right there as an example, wanting to hear new stories, the profiles of local entrepreneurs in the community. So a point of interest on that page, you can see one of the quotes, the youth said, "You see, we live out loud, we are connected, and we are passionate." So the report attempts to really focus on the youth voice and make sure that that's front and center in the presentation. The report also features up there on the left, a summary of a survey that was conducted by the Hydroway Bruce Gray and the Community Foundation looking at how prepared nonprofits and charities are at recruiting youth as board members and in leadership roles and volunteer roles. Of note on that second page about substance use, a point of interest, fifteen percent of Grecrews residents aged twelve and older reported using cannabis in the past year. And cannabis use in the past year for eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds is forty-four percent. And that statistic is similar to Ontario's overall. The next section looks at topics such as economic barriers, physical activity, identity and belonging, and employment and training as well. And a point of interest on the next page, the unemployment rate for youth aged fifteen to twenty-four is the highest of all age cohorts in the Stratford-Bruce Peninsula Economic Region at ten percent. Also, the report included a summary of a research project on the significance of the Woodford on Native Cultural Romance Center and its effect on the well-being of urban indigenous youth in our community. That's on the right-hand side. The section also addresses health and well-being, living with parents, homelessness, and even sleep statistics. One very encouraging stat is that ninety-nine percent of children and youth ages twelve to seventeen in Grecrews feel satisfied or very satisfied with their lives. And this is higher than the percentage among Ontario children in the same age group. So very encouraging statistic about how youth feel about their level of survival. Other sections address plans after education, moving away, about the outward migration of youth that we talked about at the very start, educational attainment, how the foundation's supporting tuition. And there's a section on mental wellness and stress on the right-hand side. And we arrived at some findings from the We Care Project, which was an investigation into the root cause of youth suicide in our area. Focused groups, one-on-one discussions and surveys were used to collect information from over four hundred respondents. In one point of interest there, a bubble, one-third of Grecrews youth aged ten to seventeen indicate that their family members' problems prevent them from talking about their own problems. So again, going back to that, youth needing a voice to be heard. So the report continues the foundation's vital science work, and that's a national program that's led by community foundations of Canada. So community foundations across the country use this format to really forge discussion around topics about vitality and indicating significant trends and supporting actions that are critical to our quality of life. One point of interest on the last page is the foundation works at convening local knowledge, and the arrow points to our list of members of our advisory committee. And we are very grateful for the volunteer support and the convening of knowledge and the expertise that that committee brings to our vital science work. So I hope that that quick overview encourages you to visit our site and to download the report. And in summary, I think when you read through the whole thing, you're going to see that there's a lot of positive things about youth in our community. We know that they do venture away for the lure of larger cities and for educational pursuits. And what we want to do is make sure that their voice is heard while they're with us and that we listen to what they have to say. Change is coming, and we need to be prepared to welcome youth to take on leadership roles if our life in the rural Ontario is going to survive. So I hope that that's a tease for you to dig a little bit deeper into the report. And I'll turn the mic over to Tanya, who's gonna talk about another report or any of the index of all these.
So before we go to Tanya, thank you for your report. Very interesting, Stuart. Councilor DeSai, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It's a really interesting report, and I just wanted to confirm that it's communityfoundationgrecrewsca.ca, dot com. Thank you. My question to you, Stuart, I understand that one of the tactics that's there of your presentation was around the number of youth who expect to find a job that pays them a living wage, I guess, in the area after they're done their education. The other thing you mentioned was around nonprofit boards having youth on their boards and leadership roles and so on. I fail to see a connection between the two. Because with nonprofit board, you're usually a volunteer in a volunteering capacity. I don't see how increasing the number of youth on a volunteer board would lead to them feeling that they're more likely to find a job in the area, be able to find a living in the area after education. For example, Southgate, and I shudder saying this, and I'm having to.
Careful.
But Southgate has this awesome program around youth where they've got a youth action committee. And it's done really good things and so on. But I doubt that those, the kids who are in that, on that committee would feel any different about being able to find a living after education. So what is the connection between the two?
Thanks for your question. I would agree that perhaps those two things are mutually distinct and separate. However, when we launched our report, we did a day-long series of events around youth and entrepreneurship. And one of the components of the day was a workshop that our R B C Future Long Brand for fifty young people about a personal brand. And they urged youth to think about how they're presenting themselves and networking and branding themselves as a prospective employee. And I think that volunteerism and getting involved in the community in those types of ways is really integral to a good personal brand and building connections while they're, while they're developing their skill sets and seeking out employment too. But as you go through the report, you'll see that there are sometimes contradictory things. We talk about health issues, about concerns about substance abuse, yet we... We talk about health issues, about concerns about substance abuse, yet people feel very satisfied with their lives. A lot of the statistics come from surveys where people are self-declarating as well. So, someone may say something very positive but still have to be addressing other issues. So, it's hard to make summary comments and I think in reading it, I hope that people are able to read things and glean information from sometimes contradictory points, but both informative.
And thank you, Tanya.
Thank you for having me back. I also hope that today we could have launched the C I W report and shared it with you all today. In fact, we were crafting the media release, et cetera. But the final report is not quite ready, but I will share with you what we have thus far. And I thought this could be a good primer for the next week or so when we do expect the report to be ready so that you all recognize it when it comes out. So, I was here, I think it was March of last year, just to talk a little bit about the C I W, the Community Index of Wellbeing. For those of you who aren't familiar with the model, it is a robust composite index that's been used across our country to measure wellbeing. And so, there's a lot of different types of measurement tools that are out there that don't quite capture this story. So, this is really about that wellbeing and connectivity back to the community. So, you'll see the eight domains there, things like communities, culture, environment, et cetera. And within each of those domains, there's eight indicators. So, this is what was the premise of the survey. And on the working group, we did have Gray County, so Barb, that he has been working alongside with Kim. We had Bruce County, Community Foundation because of the work at the Vital Science Report, the Southeast Gray Community Health Center, my organization with the host. And we've had the Bruce Gray Poverty Task Force, as well as the Gray Bruce Health Unit because of their strong epidemiology piece. So, this is an example of what that survey went out to respondents last spring, late spring. It was stratified by municipality, ran with sample households. So, it would have been great to have just been able to send it out and keep it out there, have online versions. And we did get a lot of people asking, "I'd love to pull out the survey." And what the surveyors and with the University of Waterloo, everybody kept saying, "No, we have to keep this round." This is the validity, even if we have smaller numbers, far outweighs, you know, getting the volume of people who want to fill it. So, the data is good in that way. The questionnaire went out, behaviors and perceptions directly rated to each of those domains, measuring aspects of overall wellbeing, comprehensive demographics, so people did answer things. So, that's really key in terms of being able to make those kind of comparative pieces. The technical report, so it's quite big. It's all raw data, it has been received. So, I'll be sharing that out with Barb, with Kim. It will be able to be shared with the planners, et cetera. It has really good data in there. We did have to sign a data sharing agreement that said we won't make that piece of the report public. And the reason because we did hope to reach a certain kind of saturation point with the data to be able to say, drill down to Walter's fault or drill down to Chesley. We just didn't have that respondent number. So, it could be identifiable should we make that type of data available. So, that full report is ready and it will be shared with our partners along with that data sharing agreement. The thing that we're waiting for is the analysis report. So, things that really are true and near and dear to our heart, things like transportation, housing, income, social isolation, so things that we've really been discussing as a county in general. So, that report is going to be vetted through our partners just to have an eyeing on, to make sure everybody feels comfortable with how things are being presented. That will form the basis of the media release, which will then be crafted and sent out. We just want to make sure when that communication piece goes out, it's done right because we expect that people, and drive people to the site too, to see the report. So, we just want to make sure that we waited this long that the communication piece was there. Seventeen thousand households were in total, the survey. The estimated response rate was ten point four percent, which was, again, disappointing for me. But Dr. Smalley, who's the director of C I W, says that's above expectation for general population surveys. So, he was happy with that, again, the weighted demographics. And they were doing a lot of going through the data and making sure the validity. One of the things I think the planners and people who will see that last copy, the comment section, pages and pages of comments, really rich information there. So, that'll be great too in terms of helping policy planning. I did include a couple of slides just to give you a bit of an idea of kind of some of the preliminary data that's come in. So, this is a Bruce and Gray County overall. So, there's the eight domains with the overall wellbeing at the end. And you can see we fall above in many of the categories. And then breaking it down again to, great to see that neighborhood as a place to live is right there on the top because that's that real connectivity piece. And so, again, within that, you can drill down with a lot of data, but the reports are going to be quite helpful again for that healthy policy finding piece. And we don't want to do a comparison between Bruce and Gray, but they have pulled it out for us because county-specific, if Gray County decided we want to employ the University of Waterloo to do a specific report around this for us. So, we want to work on that, we want to make sure that data is teased out. And this was just the last kind of slide, some of the things that poked through pretty strongly, right? That Dr. Smalley did share with me last week. Some of the things, trends we saw was the above-average wellbeing with men who are older, married, higher income, highly educated, longer time residing in the region. Whereas the below-average wellbeing with women, younger, lower income, more often unemployed, living with a disability, more than thirty percent on the unconscious. So, just a little bit of an idea, some of the data that we can connect, there's things on environment, water, parks, et cetera, et cetera. So, each of those domains then, we're going to be able to give you a full report on that. And it's not really within my scope to interpret the data, so I didn't feel like comfortable going into any more detail than that. But we're hoping that Dr. Smalley will come up at the end of June to the Health and Community Partnership because we do have a cross-sector of individuals at that table. And he might give everybody a cut of the month to read the report and then he can give us some interpretation on that point.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, Councilor DeSai?
Mr. Warden, so with seventeen thousand households that were invited, a ten point four percent response rate versus one thousand eight hundred households, how many individuals do those households represent? And my follow-up question then is, one of the things you mentioned was that a lot of people were asking to fill the forms out online or if they could fill out the form despite not being one of the households invited. What are the downsides? Because I don't understand what the downsides are to allowing them to respond. Because with the seventeen households, seventeen thousand households that were invited, the people who filled out the forms are likely the same people who would have asked to fill out the forms despite not being invited. So, would it not have given a bit of a larger sample size?
You'd think so, but not necessarily so. So, your first question, it was seventeen, eighteen, and hundred households. So, within that database of individuals, there will be eighteen hundred, or give or take, individuals filled out it. And in their demographic, they'll say, "I'm a household of X amount, I have, you know, X amount of dependents in the house." So, you could drill down deeper than that. The rigor of research, so if anybody knows Alana from the health unit, I've learned a lot this year just around that whole piece. And really, it isn't necessarily the people who have called and asked for a mail survey who had their code. They weren't typical people who would be necessarily filling out, and that's the beauty of that. When we look at things like, say, how much percentage of men are still there, how many percentage of this individual is still there. At the end of the day, you don't want an oversaturation of, say, any specific sub-population that isn't really indicative of where speaking for the whole county. So, from a research lens, this is what made most sense. And we're hoping that if people enjoy the report and they think it's worthwhile, that in five years' time, they recommend redoing it. And then we can really get behind that and perhaps it's something that individuals will recognize. And if we can get that percentage up again, we'll see benchmarks, we'll see some movement on things. And then hopefully, we can get that number higher.
Councilor DeSai.
Mr. Warden, final question. You said that the final report is not ready yet. When it is ready, where can we obtain that full report and when do you think it'll be ready?
Great question. I'm expecting any time now. And what we actually, we had to include in our research as a kind of piece, was that we would make it available because we worked through exactly all the places, EGDIS was one data portal. But one of the places we don't for sure, we said it would land on the Gray Bruce Health Unit website. We felt that was a mutual place that we could guarantee that it could live. But by all means, that report could be shared and posted broadly.
Okay. Thank you very much for your reports and your information. I'm looking at faces and I think it's really appropriate that we take a short break. Back. Sorry to the economic department team, we'll get to you right after the break. Okay. We have corn, is a few missing. I understand Savannah was going to do introductions, but I don't see, oh, there she is.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, Councilor. It's really good to be back around this table with you. It's been a year already since the Business Enterprise Centre joined Gray County, which is unbelievable how fast the year has gone and how many things these ladies have accomplished. So, we wanted to bring Courtney and Taylor up today to give you a little update and tell you about all of the things coming down the pipeline because we're really on the move in that entrepreneurship realm. Bringing Business Enterprise Centre really helps us in Gray County and give that attention we need to entrepreneurship and the small business sector. So, I'm so pleased to have the team in place that we do. And if I further do, please introduce Taylor and Courtney.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Savannah mentioned it's been a year since we've been in Gray County. So, we thought this would be a great opportunity to give you an update on the programs and services that our centre is currently offering. So, one of the main things we wanted to achieve is only make the move from city-owned sound after the County of Gray was to make our services accessible to as many businesses in Gray County as possible. And we've been doing a couple of different things to try and reach that whole audience. Two days a month, I go to Launchpad and I work out the Hanover office so that we can access, you know, businesses over in that area who may not be able to come to Own Sound. And also, we're doing really well, we've actually seen an increase in number of businesses who want to book an appointment in that office. And we're going to mix things up a little bit moving forward. I'm going to go to one day a week in Hanover, or I'm going to do one day a week in Markdale, again, so we can reach more businesses. And we've been seeing that the further out businesses are coming down, the less remote they were with the services that we are offering. So, we've been doing lots of promotion around our centre on social media and just by telling them about our events. And we're finding we're leaving a lot of businesses out of the way as well, and then they're coming to access our services through that interaction. Another thing that we are doing is we're offering our training in as many communities as possible. So, for example, in the last couple of months, we've done the Fletcher-Tin, Durham, and Own Sound for training. And any of the municipalities that want to reach out to us, we partner with them in however, whatever capacity we can. And then we offer the training in their community and it reaches a different audience. And it's not reasonable in our town to, even in the middle of the winter, to expect someone to necessarily drive all the way to Own Sound. So, we're able to reach more businesses that way as well. So, in addition to the consultations and one-on-ones, which is kind of a core function of our centre, we also offer choosing programs. So, we have Starter Company Plus and we have Summer Company. And we recently found out that those are both coming back for three years, which is exciting for us. It's allowed us to do so long-term planning that we haven't had the opportunity to do in our office before. So, we're just kind of getting our minds around how it's going to roll out. But we have opened up Starter Company and Summer Company for applications actually immediately. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about those programs in detail and who would be eligible to apply for them. So, the first is Summer Company. And that is a program that is aiming that students who want to start their own summer business, they have to be between the ages of fifteen and twenty-nine, and they have to be returning to school the following year. So, through that program, our office gives students the opportunity to develop a business management that we're training and mentorship from our office. And they also receive funding which assists them with the startup costs required to run their business. So, they, depending on their college or high school, they start their businesses at different times, but typically, June is their launch date. And then throughout the summer while they're out running their business, we offer them support from our office as well as additional training. So, this year, we created a video campaign featuring some of our past participants of the Summer Company program. I'm just going to share with you two short videos about these businesses that are both still currently operating. Actually, both of these were in city-owned sound.
Please stand by.
My name is Charlie Roy and this is Naked Basics. Here at Naked Basics, we make skincare. We really are trying to build this in on zero waste, so getting rid of plastics. We're opening a refinery here next week, so laundry, dish, soap, skincare products, shampoo, and dish area. Spark I had to make a start with in Minnesota was my own skincare, and I used to have really bad acne. So, it all started just based on that and it's just expanded into something completely opposite of what I thought it would be. I would even go with the program. With the program, I was able to get a startup fund, which was fifteen hundred dollars. And once I completed the summer and I got all of my workshops in, because they have new accounting and new workshops to get prepared because it's a whole world of American business. And then near the end of it, I was able to get another fifteen hundred dollars. So, the mentors were good at kind of directing you on what was maybe the decision person's bad, but without giving you direct, like, this is what you should do. They kind of let you figure out your own, which is awesome. I just never felt alone. So, I mean, anything at all, I knew they were right there. They were able to help you, if you were stuck on marketing, if you were stuck on marketing and sales, if you were doing wrong, they were able to walk you through everything. It's awesome, so great.
So, that was Charlie, and maybe you may be familiar with Charlie. So, she offers her business in Own Sound and she did her summer company when she was at her school action. So, she was at the university level, who came back and ran her own business. And since then, she has expanded and is looking to expand again. And she has employees and she's doing incredibly well. So, she's a really great success story for the program. So, the next video I'm going to show you is Hannah, and she actually...
Hi, guys. My name is Hannah, I ran my summer company, it's their tennis club. The spark that I had that made me want to start my summer company was throwing up playing tennis, learning to walk on the tennis courts, and dating a tennis coach for the past five years. I started from ages four and twelve, and this year, I'm just getting to eighteen-year-olds, so that'll be mine. So, I'm really excited to do that. The mentors were helpful in terms of they will teach you skills on financing, which I didn't learn in school. So, that was really important for me to understand how to account for my assets and then also profit, revenue, and costs is key to running a successful business. The least important part of running the business was probably, I think, honestly, having to save the eye to it and go back into your regular team of school and not having to ask like a, dating all the tennis courts and helping out with the kids and like even just the whole business side. I really miss how you got that feeling worth it. I had challenges along the way, but I missed it in the end.
So, Hannah participated in our program last summer. And she'd actually be running the business again this summer out of Kabul Beach. She was standing up services, and she's bringing on a couple of volunteers to help with the summers. So, she's another really good success story. You know, the kids get the funding, that was right, that was the case. So, the students get the funding that first year, but there's no reason why they can't continue to run the businesses year after year as they're going through school. So, in addition to Summer Company, the other main program that we offer is Starter Company Plus. And that is a program that is geared at small, new businesses, small businesses that are expanding. So, through that program, the business is a brand of up to five thousand dollars, as well as training and mentorship. As I mentioned, we opened that program up as well. We accepted applications until this weekend. So, if you're in your community and you may be a fit for that program, please encourage them to apply. That program runs a little bit differently than Summer, that we do the training on the front of that program. So, we've been given by the province eight grants each year for them.
given probably eight grants each year for the next three years of that program. So I think as of today, we had 25 businesses who have applied for the program. So we will offer as many of those businesses as possible the training portion. And from there, it's a competitive process to actually receive the grant. But we see benefit in the training for everyone. So we do try to open that up to as many people as possible. And then once you are in Starter Company for six months, you operate. And there's monthly training, there's monthly meetings with our office as well as your mentor. So during the program for six months, we form a relationship with them. And we're there to support them many well beyond six months until they graduate beyond that program. So that's another one of the programs. If you can think of anyone off the top of your head who may be, if anything, please encourage them to apply. Because we have some really wonderful success stories. We'd like to see those people go through our program and grow and then to start their businesses in the community.
Questions? Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Ms. Warden. I have two questions. One is, do you go to high schools to advertise that this program exists?
Yes, we do. Taylor's been to most of the high schools so far this year to let them know it exists. Yeah.
And the second question is, do you visit municipalities to basically market what you offer?
Yeah. So we try to do it in different ways. For example, again, Taylor's been to most of the local job fairs this year as well to kind of reach that audience and let all of the municipalities know when the programs open up so they can share them with anyone on their mailing list as well. And then again, with many community events, we kind of set people on the programs.
Any questions? Counselor decide?
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Just a quick correction on the minutes there. If the Business Enterprise Center, that will start a market, not the launch pad, unless Hanovers is donating us a launch pad money? My question was with regards to the Business Enterprise Center in Markdale is when is that change in taking place from going from two days to Hanover to one and Hanover going to Markdale?
We were just chatting with Michelle actually last week. We're hoping it happens as soon as possible. We're just providing space right now for us to
My second question, which is around location at Markdale. With regards to Summer Company, how many applicants have we had so far? Like you said, with the Starter Company Plus, you have eight grants per year for through the next three years. Is there a limit on the number of participants a year for the Summer Company?
Yeah. So for Summer, we get six grants per year for the next three years. We find with Summer, it's not as competitive as it costs. It can be daunting for students, obviously, to start their own summer business. So we typically find we fill the spots every year. So we have five students right now who we've met with and have preliminary interviews with who will be moving forward. So there's one space still open. And it's a little bit early, so for high schools, it's a bit too late. So we're, what confidence do you feel?
With regards to the small business, or sorry, the Starter Company Plus, how do you define small business? And are there parameters around, small business starting up is rarely to do identify. Are there parameters around expansion on how you would define a small business that is expanding? And the second question around that is, how many in-states do you do per year? Is it just the one in-state where you pick all the participants? Or is there two separate?
So the province does have some guidelines around that. So it typically is an individual who's creating an employment for themselves. They have to be able to commit to run a business of 35 hours a week. They can't be doing that on a part-time basis. And as far as expansion goes, it's really, the province, according to, they want to see how those funds are best to use. So if they can use that startup, that funding, and if they open up any more discover a welcome access to new clients, then they see the value in that. So that's kind of the expansion that we're looking for. Gives me the ability to offer a new customer service. Sorry, your second question was around?
The number of in-takes per year.
Oh, yes. Unfortunately, because of how the funding is structured, we really only have the funding to do one in-state a year and do the training really properly. So we do just offer in the spring. Our plan right now is to offer in the spring for the next three years.
One last question, and this is going back to the Summer Company. One of the things was the startup fund of $1,500. Is that something that the students have to pay back at the end of the program or is that?
No, nothing is paid back on either of the programs. They do have to show how those funds were used. They have to provide receipts from the first 30 days. They have to use for startup costs. But then the balance, $1,600, they were at the end of the program. They're actually not recording on that. That's just really for them to take and go back to school or continue to operate their business, whichever they choose.
Thank you. Further questions? Is the proper name Starter Company Plus?
Yeah. It used to max, we used to do an age limit on it. And then that was from the Starter Company. We stayed in the age limit away. Now it's Starter Company Plus.
And Taylor, you didn't say anything.
I didn't think that would be coming up. So we were prepared for this.
You certainly appreciate me pointing that out, don't you?
I'm just here to smile.
Oh, you're not a shy person. Okay. I think that's it. More further questions? Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we are moving on item five, looking for, yes, counsel decide?
I'm going to do that. I must have to adjust that. It's a little warm.
Right. Okay. Are there any, I mean, to the list on the consent agenda, is there any items that need to be pulled? I think I've lost control here. I thought I'm going to blast right through. So is there any items that need to be pulled? Nonetheless, seeing none, then I'll call for a motion to put the items on the consent agenda. Moved by Counselor Mill, seconded by Counselor Mackey. All those in favor? Under any polls? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven A. Kelly, you're on deck. I'll read a motion for the right on the floor. Dr. Aggerpoo. Moved by Counselor Peavy, seconded by Counselor Plumbus. Kelly, you're up.
Thanks, Warden. And I'm really excited to be here and have the opportunity to share the process and the results of a project that I've been working on with a large group of interested parties in the community for the last year and a half. And I know for many of you, it's the first time you're going to hear about it. So I'm not going to review what we already had a chance to share in the report itself. I assume it's had a chance to do that. But what I would do instead is just give everyone a brief history of how we came about the determination that we needed this project in the first place, the process that we undertook, a quick look at the results, and then point to some of the actions that we're going to be taking over the next three years. So Food E is the name of a committee that is made up of members of staff at Gray County and Bruce County and Simcoe County, Georgian College, local business enterprise centers, community futures organizations. And we come together quarterly with the express intent of supporting agriculture and food across the South Georgian Bay region so that we can make sure that our agriculture and food community and as a major employer, major sector stays strong and is prepared to move forward into a rapidly changing market, whether those businesses are serving the local market or the regional market, or in fact, the global market as many of our agricultural businesses are. So we found back in 2013, specifically, we worked with Georgian College around curriculum development. And over the next three years, we delivered programs to over 800 individual people. So there were seminars, workshops, conferences. And we noticed that the attendance was dwindling, but we didn't know why. We were throwing darts. We had some real successes, but we weren't connecting with the sector and with the value chain the way we knew we needed to be. So we decided to undertake a research project. And that's why we decided to do a B R N E. And for those who haven't undertaken a B R N E, it's essentially a standardized and anonymized interview process. It's been used for over 30 years in Ontario for municipalities and other organizations to get an understanding of what their businesses need for the purposes of retention and expansion. And several of the project partners had been involved in the R N Es before, so they knew what the results were likely to yield and knew what the process looked like. So as a group, the Food E group secured a red grant. We hired the Amway group of Collingwood as our consultants. They have extensive experience with agriculture and food. And then we set out to decide who our value chain was. And we based our information on Federal Census of Ag from 2016 to tell us who we should be talking to, to get the information we needed. And we also examined the NICs code. So the North American Industry Classification was that told us who would fall under the agri-food value chain. And we also consulted extensively with our partners at OMAFRA, Gray County, Gray Act Services, the Ontario Federation of Agriculture, RTO7, other commodity groups, to make sure that we were going out and talking to the right people and gathering the right information. So with that, what I would like to do is walk you through a very high-level review of what that looked like and what we found out. So we're going to take a look at the B R N E surveys. So a B R N A survey looks like this. There is about 40 pages of questions here that we asked participants to answer. Over the course of this project, we gathered 85,000 data points that needed to be analyzed for our results. So according to the folks who run the B R N E program, this particular project was the most complex B R N E ever undertaken in Ontario. We had a total of six individual surveys that we used. And the reason we did that is because the agri-food value chain itself is incredibly complex. We did the standard business retention and expansion survey, which asks general questions about business satisfaction with municipal services, community services, workforce, things like that. Everybody answers those questions. Everybody answered standard community questions that are specific to the area. But because we were interviewing all types of businesses, we were also asking questions, specific to primary producers, to local and regional food producers, to processors, and to those who interacted with the tourism sector as well. So it was incredibly complex, but it was also incredibly rich in terms of the results that we were able to get. So here's what the numbers look like. We did 276 total interviews. But if you note the little note at the bottom, what was really interesting about it is, for example, if you look at 165 primary producers, 50% of those primary producers also do processing of their products in some way, shape, or form on their farm. If you go to local food producers whose food stays in market, 80% are doing value-add processing on farm. And that means when you get down to the agri-food processors line, we actually talked to more like 120 businesses that were doing processor, processing. So we got very, very deep and rich data. And this is partly because businesses along the agri-food value chain are vertically integrated. So they may be growing and then processing and then retailing. They may be interacting in the tourism sector. I would, as perhaps the best example of that, I would point to our winners who are integrated, you know, all across the value chain. In some cases, our businesses are doing our distribution. So our 276 businesses gave us deep, deep data to work with. So who participated? This is just a brief overview of the kinds of businesses we talked to. They were large and small. They were new and established. 63% have been in business for over 10 years. A third of those for over 25 years in our communities. 88 indicated that their primary market was local or regional. And that includes some of our very, very large producers who are also exporting but are in the local market as well. 97% had an owner who was involved in day-to-day operations. And 69% of businesses own their own properties in our communities. When we were done, our eight months of interviewing, it really turned out, for the most part, to be a good news story. 83% of the people that we spoke to had a good or excellent overall impression of doing business in Gray, Andrews, and Simcoe Counties and their local municipalities. Business owners are positive about doing business here and living and working in the region. And 59% said the industry and/or their sub-sector was growing. So these are some of the things that people found valuable about being here. Location, of course, quality of life. We hear that over and over again anytime we go out to the public. Lower costs of labor and housing, quality of land on which to do agricultural business, and an opportunity for businesses to grow. Hurdles, probably no surprise, cost of electricity, IT, lack of housing, and in some areas, municipal property taxes. So this just outlines some of the things that businesses of all kinds, whether we're talking about a farm or a restaurant or a distributor or tractor sales, said that they were pleased with in their municipalities and analysts pretended they could see a difference in. So for the most part, people were pleased with the state of their municipal services, like garbage and recycling is no removal. But they wanted to see in different areas, again, unique to municipalities, improvements in planning, transit, we heard over and over and over again, of course, as we do across all sectors, including manufacturing, retail, in our health sector. And the building permit process was noted to be in some areas too slow to respond to agricultural needs. This is what businesses told us. Our businesses are very innovative. They change quickly. They move quickly. And they respond to markets quickly. They want to see more supports for innovation. They are interested in new and emerging market opportunities, but they are hampered by a lack of labor, both skilled and non-skilled. So this is specifically about business expansion. 53% of businesses were looking to expand within the next 18 months. But they were hampered, again, by lack of labor, to some extent regulatory barriers, lack of key infrastructure, often internet, sometimes municipal services, sometimes access to natural gas, lack of capital came up, I don't know, yeah, again, I'm just curious. Workforce, we're going to go down to workforce because it's so important across all of our sectors. 51% said their workforce had stayed the same, but we know people are looking to hire and are having difficulties hiring. This is something that's corroborated by the Ford County Labor Market Plan Board year over year. Youth is incredibly important. Doesn't matter what part of the value chain you're in, if you're a farm, if you're a restaurant, if you're a retailer, if you're a processor. Taking advantage of high school or university co-op experiential learning programs, et cetera, is a way to get people to stay and to develop good workers. And that bottom line is very interesting. Two-thirds of our employers in the sector said they didn't have issues retaining employees once they hired them. Quality of the workforce was there, but it's a matter of time to be bought. So that's a very, very brief overview. And when we boiled down that, those 85,000 points of data, what we discovered is that it didn't make sense to identify the individual sectors. In other words, it didn't make sense to look at farms and processors and those in the regional market. It made more sense to look at all our businesses, big and small, new and old, no matter where they were on the value chain, because they had the similar concerns. And those concerns kind of fit into five buckets. Those are business supports, whether that's training, access to capital, municipal planning, and process, which is our wheelhouse. The development of agritourism, agri-culinary tourism came up over and over. The region is known as being strong in this area, but could have more coordinated efforts. Infrastructure, something that of course we are always working on at a regional level. And workforce. So this gives you the comprehensive list of our partners. So counties of Simcoe, Gray, Bruce, City of Berry, City of Orelia, Nautilus A, Futures, the South Georgian Bay, the Business Enterprise Center, and Georgian College. So I'm just going to get back to my notes here. So if you care to take a look at what 85,000 data points looks like, this is just the Gray County stuff. This is not the full report, which would have included the other counties as well. What I can share with you is the trans report. I believe it's linked in the report that we submitted. If you're interested in looking at the comments, this trans report has some graphs. But it also has the specific comments that we got from the people we interviewed. Anonymized, of course, but it'd give you a good idea of what people are thinking about. This is the data from which it was extracted. And here are the graphs and charts specific to Gray County. So anytime you want to come and have a nap in my office, I'll be waiting for you. But seriously, you are welcome to come join me in my office to discuss any of this at any time. So the year that we took to do the interviews and analyze the results has given us a really comprehensive understanding as a region and as a and as a group of partners into what the opportunities are in the region and what the challenges are in the region and how we can support the agrifood sector. A very large part of what we need to do moving forward doesn't fall to us at the county level. It falls to our partners in the community, to our municipal partners, to our commodity group partners, to educators. It's going to be our job to make sure we communicate clearly with those groups, to make sure those needs are met. And it might just be internally with, for example, planning and transportation departments, because there were needs identified with our internal departments. And to make sure that the message continues to move forward and that the projects identified can be undertaken in partnership across the communities. So, what we identified immediately as the first few projects that we want to tackle with the second half of 2019, based on need and based on our own capacity at the three counties, our three projects in particular. Over and over and over and over and over again, we've heard from our producers that abattoirs, abattoir capacity, location of abattoirs is a problem. This is not a new problem. This has been a problem since the restructuring happened almost ten years ago. We are going to do an environmental scan of our abattoir capacity and the demand and the availability. We are going to be speaking with producers, we'll speak with commodity groups, and we will make a decision as to whether it's worth the effort to try to attract an abattoir or how else we might support our producers to get what they need in terms of support so that the sector doesn't continue to move west. This is a known problem that we want to try and tackle this year. We are also looking to create a regional agrifood business directory online that will be a one-stop shop for anybody across the agricultural food value chain to find out what the supports are in the community, how to access them, who is delivering them, and who they need to pick up the phone's call. So we're going to be working in partnership with the Southsturgeon Bayes Enterprise Centre to develop that website. And we're going to start working with the Regional Tourism Organization, RTO7, Brus, Simcoe, to develop agritourism and agriculinary tourism-specific programming and support. So those are three projects that we want to tackle. And they dovetail really very well with the priorities and the actions that we've already developed in our own agrifood strategic plan for Gray County that we worked on in 2017, as well as the corporate strategic plan. And also our soon, we hope to be accepted and ratified, official plan. And I would like to point out that a lot of the work in the OP around on-farm permitted uses aligns perfectly with our results in terms of the discovery of how many of our primary producers are in fact doing on-farm processing and value adds. Our policies and our official plan align really, really well for continued success for those businesses. You will have received, I can see them on the tables, our new agrifood information rack cards that we produced for this year. We wanted people to understand the impact and significance of the agrifood sector in Gray County and tell some stories. If you would like those for municipal offices, I'd be happy to have those where you keep in your own racks there because it's important to us to continue to tell the story. And with that, I'm going to bring it to a close and welcome questions.
Thank you, Philly. Brian, Councilor.
That's okay, bud. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Philly, for the report, Ms. Markowitz. Good work, very good work. And I actually personally participated.
You blew the anonymity, I knew you'd do it.
Nobody knows what my answers were.
Porn silence.
Yes, you do.
Five people in this room, I'm not saying.
It's somewhat dismayed to see our planning departments beat up again. You know, everybody has concerns.
Can I speak to that?
Well, as soon as I'm done. I'm not chair, so I'll defer to the chair. But I dare say, though, if we were to hear from folks that were living beside a proposal, they would suggest that the planning process is too fast. Right? It always happens. So I'm wondering maybe if somewhere down the road, part of our project might be, do we bite the bullet and say, one or the other, upper or lower tier, get out of the planning business? Randy may or may not want to hear that. But I'm wondering if that's where we need to go. And certainly, that's a theme rattled around a number of industries throughout the province these days. So, anyway, great report. I enjoyed reading it, it was very well done. Thank you, Philly.
Thank you. So I will respond, say, because this was an overview, I didn't get down into the granular level. But what I can say is that the complaints were more around the permitting process than the planning process. And they vary from municipality to municipality because every municipality has a different way of responding.
I didn't want to say anything about Gray County, but I hear you.
And with respect to planning, often it is a matter of recognizing that there are differences between neighboring municipalities that will be, that can potentially cause frustration and migration of businesses depending on what it is that they want to do. And that was a frustration. It wasn't that the planning itself and the overall planning documents were the problem. It was just about inconsistencies. So one of the things that we are going to try to do is communicate with all the partners. We know that the OPs are done with public consultation. We know they last for decades and they're only reviewed on, every five years, Randy?
Every ten would be every ten years.
Every ten years. So we know we don't really have an opportunity to effect much change. But what we can attempt to do is keep the conversation going with our municipal partners in planning so that they understand the needs of the agricultural community and the agriculture and food community and keep it in line, which we know they're doing. But what we would like to see eventually is some kind of consistency, which was the main complaint, is that things were not the same. Playing field was planned.
Can I?
Yeah, just further to those comments. One of the benefits we had with Philly involved in this project was to get some preliminary insights in terms of some of the things that were coming out of the interviews. And with that, we were still going through the re-color gray process at that time. And with that, we made some changes to policies, not only from the insights that we heard from this project, but as well as our community consultations with the agricultural community to make sure that policies are not the barrier. So we made some, we think, some quite positive changes to re-color gray in the new official plan. We're really hoping the province approves that soon. And then we'll be working with local municipal partners to implement some of those changes of identifying the county official plan again, to provide that consistency policy framework to make sure that we're enabling and not being a barrier to some of the items that Philly spoke about in the presentation.
Councilor Keating?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Philly, thank you for your stat, for your report. And I can see how excited you are about moving forward with the findings. A question, I wonder if we could drill a little bit deeper into the workforce in terms of something that's being discussed at the Fort Cynneber Market Board. Did you find through our conversations in the agricultural community a concern for the process for hiring foreign workers and the documentation that's required? And would there be a benefit to those folks if there was a more centralized approach to it?
We certainly heard that. And if you have an opportunity to take a look at this document, which is linked, which is our work plan document, you'll see that it's very vague wording here, but our number one priority in workforce is to continue to support the foreign workers program. That means support and provide advocacy to our farms that are using that program, to yes, make sure that the support continues, the process is streamlined. I understand that the process has been complicated largely to respond to threat of human trafficking and international crime and sex work and a number of things that don't directly involve our agricultural community, but everything is painted with the same brush and it's made a very, very difficult one on our producers. And they have an understanding of it, and they are pushing back and advocating on behalf of the sectors that are not at risk of putting other people, putting foreign workers at the kind of risk that they have in other sectors of criminal. Exotic dancers, for example, that are often trafficked, you know, through crime. So it's an incredibly complex problem that we are aware of. And I'm looking my ears open, please don't ask me what you want to hear.
I'll go with Councilor Downey first.
One thing I didn't notice too much in the occasion, the Canadian Food Inspection Agency seems to be out in the agricultural community, seems to be a real thorn as far as people who have a habit in your business. Did you feel that?
There were questions specific to CFIA and specific to all the agencies that agricultural businesses might interact with. And I'll admit, I don't remember the specific response around CFIA. I think it was a, it's a necessary evil. It wasn't, it didn't come up. I'm not remembering it, which suggests that it didn't come up as a big barrier, but I would be more than happy to take a look at that question and see what the results were.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you, Warden. Great, great presentation and study. We really appreciate it. I wonder if you could provide more comment with regard to infrastructure? Were the participants comments dealing with the focus on there's a necessity to improve and enhance infrastructure? Or was there more of a drill-down comment? And that maybe could provide a bit of a pathway for the upper tier or the local tier to address infrastructure in a more proactive way?
Absolutely, we can drill down. And one of the things that I have started to do and we will continue to do as part of the process is communicate the infrastructure needs at the municipal level. So for example, I know from interviews what happens on the road when you change over a municipal border and one municipality has tamped down their gravel and one municipality hasn't because they've gone up to the line halfway up the hill and the gravel is loose and the tractor rolls. So I've heard the stories. And we have that information on that granular level about what infrastructure needs to be supported and improved in which municipality. And part of the process will be communicating that back to the municipalities and that will be coming up within the year. Thank you, Warden. Thank you.
Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm a councilor. So, you know, thank you very much for being here. I must, I was not interviewed. Certainly, as we know, to the front community, we do have a number of three partner groups, which is the Federation, National Farmers' Association. Are you meeting up with them, if you're bored?
Yes, so they were all consulted in advance of the process and they are all informed of the results. We're waiting to get approval at all three county councils. Bruce goes next, we guide you. And then we're going to go back out with communications to media, to the general public, stakeholders who were involved in the process, and all the commodity organizations and community organizations to communicate our comments. Yeah, absolutely ongoing, and that is a major part of this, communicating with our organizations.
Yeah, definitely. And I'll say, just with the Gray County Federation, I know part of another three benchmarks, one of them was economic development. And so really into that part of looking forward of a lot of public issues around planning today that we would do anything else. So I'll leave it at that. I'm sure they've sold those groups that I mentioned before.
Yeah, absolutely. And just in addition to that, when we were deciding who to interview, we made a real effort not to talk to the people who've already been at the table for the last five years, ten years, twenty years. We really wanted to have new voices. So we relied on those organizations to put names forward of people that we hadn't communicated with before. So we would have really neutral interviews. And also, we make sure whenever possible to have our interviewees be involved in some way, on board of directors of one of the organizations or a volunteer at an event in the community to make sure that the people we were interviewing not only had a deep knowledge of their own work, but the sector in general and the communities. We made real efforts to find an R G B list to make sure that we got the most bang for our buck.
Certainly, if we'll see local fairs this morning, because that's a sector that you do a lot of.
Yeah, we're farmer's markets, we were just out at Grumby Gray. So we're doing more, we are absolutely doing more community outreach and spreading the message.
Just as a side, you were here maybe a month and a half ago talking about land. Are you able to talk to them a little bit, you know, we were doing?
Oh, I'd be happy to if we can take a minute with the land matchmaking event. Yes, so the news moving forward on the land matchmaking event is now in semi-regular communication or what will be ongoing communication with the University of Bath. They're very, very interested in what we're doing here and they want to track our project. We are going to, we have a small pool of money left over from the BRE project. And as a group, so Gray, Brus, and Simcoe, we are going to officially join as members of the farm link organization and have those things on their website so we can continue to work together to attract potential new farm owners, businesses, people who want to lease land and bring more land into production. So I don't have any hard numbers to bring you now, but that project is continuing in a couple of different directions. So we're excited about that.
Councilor Mac?
Thanks, Warden. Thanks, Philly, for all your hard work. You touched on abattoirs. Can you let us know how you could locally support the addition of more abattoirs for locally processing and no disrespect to the unions?
Give me a few months. That's the short answer.
What are the specific things, are they provincial developments right now or?
There's a bunch of, the problem with abattoirs is the same problem with all the businesses. Workforce, number one. We're seeing that our small abattoirs are having trouble hiring people. They're having trouble hiring people with the skills that they need. We're seeing more and more of our small producers moving away from people in the herds and moving towards cash crop because commodity markets. And because it's easier than trying to get the herd on the truck and trying to get the time at the abattoir when there's competition for time. And we are seeing more consolidation of our animals onto feedlot-style farms and them going through the larger CFIA inspected abattoirs rather than the provincially inspected abattoirs. There's a whole bunch of change happening at the same time. And I don't want to get ahead of myself because what I might, I might be representing stuff that might have been in reality in the industry two or three years ago, but I want to make sure that I know exactly what's going on on the ground now. And we're going to have to do that by talking to folks here. I know that there's still a lot of business going through local abattoirs and animal meat being sold into local markets and a lot of happy customers for it. But it's getting more and more difficult, whether it's gas prices, finding the time, the business owners aging out and not being able to find buyers, not being able to have young employees, there's a whole bunch of things going on. We don't know what the real problem is. We just don't, we will.
Because there's certainly, I think, we're going to learn for expansion. There's a lot of people that want to probably locally grow and be for land. And land's becoming more and more popular all the time. But it's a matter of getting your process locally that the issue seems to be.
Gray County has seen the largest shift in all of Ontario, land being taken out of pasture and put into cash crops in the five years between the two federal census periods for the census of ag. We've seen massive, massive shifts. And that's going to be one of the things that's going to keep that sector alive is people keeping animals on pasture, as I said, because the feedlot animals are generally going through larger abattoirs of the area. So it's a very complex problem and we're hoping to find a solution.
All the marginal land in Southgate, we certainly need some of the, the rest of that.
All right, sounds like we're ready to go. So a motion to receive and endorse the regional work plan, all those in favor? I don't really hold. Thanks, Karen. Thank you very much, Ellen.
Thank you so much for the audience.
Okay, item seventeen. Looking at West Gray, the corner of three and four. I need a mover. Speaking of West Gray. Okay, moved by Councilor Robinson and seconded by Councilor Hutchinson. And Pat, up the floor.
Thank you, Wardens. This is a report.
This is a report speaking about the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program Rural and Northern Communities Funding Stream. It's a very catchy name, can't wait to apply for it. Anyway, we got documentation about this program March twelfth. The grant focused on roads, bridges, air, marine. It's federal, fifty percent supported, thirty-three percent provincial and sixteen point seven municipal. Uh, the, the main criteria for it is critical health and safety issues. So as soon as we, you know, realized that, the person that kind of came to mind was our River Three, River Four intersection, which we, that kind of flag, it was already our highest accident intersection in the county. It's in our tenure plan. That was another criteria for the, for the program that should be in your asset management plan. So basically it's a program funding two hundred fifty million over ten years, which the math on that number doesn't really quite work there because it's supposed to be constructed by twenty twenty six, so I can't quite figure that number, but that's what was in the documentation we got, so. So River Four, Three, just for a little background, it's, it's a fairly high accident location. Geometrically, there's nothing really efficient about it. There aren't big accidents there. Typically, somebody turning left, waiting to turn out and there'll be a car slipping around on the right and a car trying to turn the other left is, is kind of T-bone and that type of thing, right? So those are the type of accidents we had. Driver error really has always been what it's called, but that was quite frequently. So we've been wanting for a while to eventually make that intersection a roundabout because we looked into adding left turn lanes. We looked at adding left turn lanes, but it just, along with that intersection is the kind of curves coming into it and it's so, it's so wide now. Adding more turn lanes would make it even wider and really trying to kind of get across it, so that's kind of why we've been leaning towards a roundabout. So this seems to us to be a good opportunity. We have a little bit of interest, just, you know, picking the tires from member of the counties, but no intersection really, timeline is, I mean, this one as far as just safety related. So the timeline is to apply by, you know, May fourteenth. As I said, construction last twenty twenty six. It was originally in our tenure plan for twenty twenty three. Our schedule listed here, we've moved it up to twenty twenty two. One good thing with this funding, I will say, is it didn't ask for shower ready projects, which was a really nice change to see because we don't have as many shower ready projects as we'd like to have. I'm sure we're all in the same boat, so it's nice to give the time to go through the EA, go through the consultation, the duty to consult and all those things with this money. So it's going to be a fairly long process. We have a ma-, uh, a figure here on page twenty-three, the first figure, that is our DAS Incident Analysis Map. So if you look at that, you'll see River Four and Three as the, as the hotspot on, on accidents. Now, this data has not been super good, there's probably a few missing, you know, I can think back of an accident somewhere that wasn't on here for whatever reason, which is, you know, kind of the root cause of that data. The other thing is just on page twenty-four, it's just a very, very flimsy sketch. Probably won't end up looking exactly like this at the end. You know, you just, the, the angles of, of into the roundabout aren't the greatest. Just looking at it makes you want to see how fast you can turn from River Four on to River Three, right? So you really don't want that with a roundabout, so it will probably be not quite that way. That's just kind of a general monopath template that we use. But just to show you that it is a good intersection for a roundabout and that there's actually quite a bit of room there. This is one house, um, which we shouldn't be impeding on, or should at least on acquisition of some sort to get some daylight or illumination and that type of thing, but, um, as far as our price, uh, we're, we're recommending, we're estimating that it's going to be about one point nine million. That number came from, um, trade and engineering who worked on the roundabout in two days ago. So that's kind of, I know the only one was, was pretty significant and more expensive, but it is a big one with some, uh, pretty extensive approach angles, so, um, I know it was more than this, but this was kind of, you felt comfortable with. Uh, the only other thing I'd like to mention is that this intersection is also in our, and I don't want to get into a big discussion of the development charges, obviously, but this intersection wasn't our development charge by law, so we have been collecting development charges on it. We didn't really put it in our financial chart here. Obviously, those are, you know, collected for great kind of projects, you know, you're not going to really use your own development charges on the fair portion of the grant, so, um, that's why it's kind of not mentioned here in case, in case that comes up. But this is our, our recommendation to apply for this intersection. I think we can put a pretty convincing package together showing indeed of that intersection.
Again, Councilwoman Gammell?
Thanks, Pat. Um, well, Indian County has a number of roundabouts and, you know, Gray's kind of, you know, relatively new, so are there any statistics from Wellington on a more public safety standpoint about the number of accidents and the serious injuries that are occurring, you know, prior to a roundabout and after a roundabout?
Through you, Mr. Ward. Now, having gotten in from Wellington yet, I, I took a roundabout course a number of years ago in Kitchener and basically what Kitchener was doing then was, was using as your cost benefit analysis, they were using a fatality as a, as a, as a financial number. That is basically why Kitchener is so all around the road. So an average single line intersection, let me say, average of two point seven, like a major one, the average of six point seven fatalities a year. A roundabout has only really been one that anybody can remember. It's a pair, you know, smashing your teeth in the middle of the night here, type of accident. So they kind of use that as, the, in Kitchener, the cost benefit analysis, always, the roundabouts always win out because the cost of society is a loss of human life, so severe. Now, that being said, they accept that as a cost of society, kind of take that as their own, whereas some other agencies might say, well, that's not us paying for that, that's insurance or that's the healthcare system or that's whatever. So that's kind of, it would, at that time, it was kind of point seven fatalities a year versus not really for a roundabout, so that's kind of.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Don't hold. Any polls? That's Carrie. Thank you. Scott, you're up next, from item seventeen C. Climate Change Action Plan, a student project. I need a mover to put that on the table. Moved by Councilor Bart Nicky, seconded by, uh, Councilor Patterson. Scott, you have the floor.
All right, thanks, uh, Ward. Thanks. So, uh, Council may remember that at the last April eleventh committee, the whole meeting, we had a presentation from two students from the University of Wealth Group that created the, uh, the student-led climate change action plan report for, for the county. Um, and I apologize on the timing on this, based on the end of the student semester and, and our report headlines and everything else, uh, this report had to follow two weeks later, but hopefully it's giving you time to maybe ruminate on some of the students' recommendations and how they would think in that regard. What we have before us is, is a report that, that outlines, uh, some of the, the summary items of, of their report and also suggests some, some next steps. And in this regard, uh, they broke their recommendations into two categories after doing their jurisdictional scan and a survey of county departments and municipalities. And, and basically those two categories revolved around planning policy adjustments, uh, some of which are underway and some of which would be new to the county, as well as operational improvements. From a planning policy adjustment standpoint, uh, they recommended setting minimum targets for, for density within our settlement areas, promoting infill development, implementing the county's Natural Heritage Systems Study, which was done through Green and Gray and that's already being implemented through our, our new county official plan, Recolor Gray. Uh, they recommended trying to establish a scoring system for new development applications that would measure things like density and walkability and environmental protection. They also recommended trying to limit new residential homes outside of our settlement areas and working collaboratively with municipalities on, on their own official plan updates where, where appropriate. From an operational standpoint, they recommended we start to better track our energy usage or current energy usage, uh, within, uh, within county facilities. Uh, they recommended some options for retro, retrofitting facilities, including things like LE, LE heat lighting as well as equipment, uh, maybe looking at, uh, uh, at an electric fleet where feasible, uh, for certain vehicles. Uh, they recommended going towards, um, more telecommuting, telecommuting options, both for staff, but also to better serve the public, uh, which would hopefully alleviate some driving time on members of the public needing to come to county offices. Uh, they also recommended, and, and planning is the worst offender here, trying to go a little more paperless, um, as I, as I bring out my rounds of paper with me. Uh, and they also had other recommendations in terms of continuing to advocate and support broadband projects as the county has done through SWIFT and working collaboratively with municipalities and senior levels of government on intercommunity transit, which again, the county is, is already doing. And so these were, were some of their, their top level, um, recommendations that the county could consider. And so in looking at these recommendations, what the county needs to do now, uh, with, with the support and input from council, uh, is to look at what the county wants to see of the climate change action plan. Uh, from a staff perspective, first and foremost, we really want to see actionable items. Um, this type of report or study could very easily turn into a, you know, a high level report that has general objectives and they all pat ourselves on the back for saving the environment. But that's not really what we want to see. We want to see something that has specific targets in it, um, which establishes baselines for, for our current emissions and, and what our targets should be for, for, uh, reducing those emissions where possible. Um, we want to see a, a project which could have us work collaboratively with the municipalities, conservation authorities that have jurisdiction within Gray, uh, the health unit and, and the province where feasible, um, to try to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and, and to try to work with these groups and, and see what data points, uh, these other groups are already collecting, uh, so that, that we're not reinventing the wheel there. They had also suggested we could consider, uh, working with groups like Conservation Authority to improve mapping or, or the province to improve mapping and this might include, uh, improving mapping for areas that might be particularly, uh, flood prone, uh, as a climate starts to change and we see more adverse weather, um, but also looking at things like soils mapping. Um, as I stated earlier, uh, they recommended a number of operational land and, and planning changes that we could consider. Um, they also recommended when we go out to this, uh, this next step, this climate change action plan, uh, broad consultation. Uh, this consultation would have to be with all the groups that I suggested in terms of municipalities and conservation authorities, um, but it would also have to be with, with different sectors, whether it be industry or whether it be the agricultural community, uh, to see what impacts, um, county policy might have on them, whether positive or negative, and certainly Philly's comments a couple of reports ago here were, were well taken in that regard. And then they, as I said, they also recommended, uh, continuing on with the broadband and, and transit initiatives in that regard. Really through this report, um, one of the things we'd be hoping to establish is, is public sector leadership at the county level that we could work with our municipal partners on, uh, to, to really demonstrate that leadership and, and hopefully have it spread into some of our business community and work with our business community there. Um, in terms of the recommendations that they suggested, a number of these initiatives can be done in-house. They consulted with a number of our, our county departments and municipalities and, and in many cases, those, those municipalities and, and those departments have the best ideas for how to improve their operations and, and how to, uh, make their, their operations potentially more, more, um, climate friendly, if you will. There's some of the initiatives that they've recommended we've looked at, included, um, establishing that baseline for what emissions are and, and then setting targets for, for how we reduce those emissions over time, um, that we might need professional help on, that we don't have that kind of expertise on staff. And so that's where we would be recommending, uh, going out to a request for proposals on, on some of these matters. Other matters, depending on, on how deep we get into it, including the mapping piece, uh, could go significantly beyond this project and it might be something that we, we set aside for now and, and we flag working with our conservation authorities and other groups on, um, because those could, could be significantly, um, costly endeavors and, and could take a long time, too. Uh, but we know our conservation authorities are, are constantly improving their mapping already in that regard, so we, we could certainly try to work with them. And I think the other thing, uh, we'd want to stress here is, is, you know, whether or not we were to brand this as a climate change action plan, uh, more than anything else, um, it's just good planning, uh, both from a land use planning perspective and from an operational perspective. You know, the, the objectives that the students have, have recommended addressing, um, not only would, would aid in, in climate change mitigation factors, but they would aid in, in a number of others. So if we said that we're, we're increasing our density and we're looking for infill opportunities because, because we want to, you know, save Mother Earth, um, by doing so, we're also aiding with affordable and attainable housing objectives. Uh, if we're becoming more energy efficient, uh, hopefully we're becoming more, uh, cost effective as, as a, as a two-tier level of government. Um, so there's a number of objectives there, um, that, that would help other county priorities and, and account development in that sense. So what we would really try to, to stress here is, is that, uh, that we're doing this for multiple purposes, not just for, for the climate change aspect, um, but, but to, to better serve, uh, the public in this regard. Um, from a financial perspective, uh, we currently have fifty thousand dollars set aside in the two thousand and eighteen budget for this project. Uh, as I suggested, we'd be looking to do a number of these, uh, initiatives in-house, uh, alongside our partners at the municipal level and conservation authority level, um, but we'd also be looking to prepare a request for proposals, um, to help tackle some of those other pieces like the, the, the numbers and, and the, establishing the baseline for emissions. So we'd work with our hard-fitting staff on, on drafting a request for proposals in that regard. At this stage, uh, that's all I have. The recommendation of this report is, is that, oh, this report and the student report we received, um, and that staff collect the input from council today, and I brought my pen with me, um, to try to see what council views as priorities, uh, for this plan moving forward, sets that when, when we look in-house and when we look out to, to a consultant, uh, we can hopefully address as many of, of the oral primaries as possible. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions and, and sort of feedback if there's some of this time.
There are none, Scott? Any questions? Comments? Councilor Bart?
Just a comment. With the announcement by the province of cuts to the conservation of boarding budgets by half for some of the work you have identified, uh, I, I totally support a centralized model to attack these kinds of problems. I think that none of us as individual, individual municipalities, uh, can afford this and our conservation authorities giving each municipality advice is now going to be hampered significantly. So I support going with it with this.
Thank you. Others? Councilwoman McQueen?
Well, I think if you watch the news this last few days, you see what's happening with water, to the parts of our province and, and other provinces. The only thing that was brought up from, uh, in the era of Galton was going through and, and properly sizing our mature culverts, our, at both sizes that are for the future. Because we know we have culverts and we know we have inventory of culverts and stuff, but for that future situations of, of water, are they sized for that climate change perspective? And I guess I just still have evidence in saying, uh, this is the biggest issue is it seems to be the quality of issues with climate change or climate changes is, is the correctness of our weather and change and why. And I just think from a great county perspective and an infrastructure system, how we, we're doing each hand. And I know every time somebody goes to a project there, make sure they do the study and, uh, they collectively can debate the picture. And, uh, so I know that seems to be where property damage and I know, you know, my conservation theory, that is a big thing in the sense that we don't allow people to build, but you know, we see what's going on. So we've, you know, I remember how many years back, we speeded over, I got four inch rain in like an hour and a half or something like that, it just moved. So, yeah, but just over there.
Scott?
That's a great point. Thank you for that. Um, one of the things that we've heard from, from regional stakeholders over the years is that when we're designing new developments and when we're looking at stormwater management facilities, um, we're still designing for things like a hundred year storm and a hundred year storm hasn't changed and so our stormwater facilities are still, um, built to accommodate that storm, but what has changed is the frequency of those events. So if we have a hundred year storm followed a few days later by a five year storm and that hundred year stormwater hasn't dissipated yet and therefore the, the stormwater facility is, is, is overextended, so to speak, then that's where we can cause issues. So we want to work with, with our, our county and municipal partners, especially at the, um, transportation and operations levels, uh, to try to better understand what this means from an infrastructure perspective because, you know, planners are by no means the experts in that. Um, but, but we have lots of talent on staff that, that we want to, uh, try to work with and, and look at best practices in other municipalities and jurisdictions, uh, to see what can be done there from a culvert and stormwater perspective. So, thank you.
Anything to add, Redden?
You know, just, uh, a project that we're partnering on with Gray Sawall and Blue Mountains, um, we got funding through the federal government and, uh, would, it'll, it's a pilot We got funding through the federal government and it's a pilot project, and that'll allow us to collect detailed information like culvert sizes and detailed elevation data so that we can model certain storm events. And with that, we'll get into recommendations, we're hoping, of what, when infrastructure upgrades are going to be required going forward in order to address some of these climate change impacts.
Let's take out County of Blue Mountains, Council of Salona.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Yes, and I'd like to follow up on what Randy and Paul just said. We are applying the LiDAR survey. One of the most distressing things for myself as a geologist who loves maps and information, and you probably noted that I do a lot of information, was the lack of information that I found when I was elected is, you know, we don't really have, we don't really have a town by drainage plan, and taking that one step further is a county-wide drainage plan, because of course the water doesn't recognize when it hits the municipal boundary. It just goes across and keeps going. And what I found was that when we do developments, we do a drainage plan for the specific development, but very seldom is considered where the water's coming from and where is it going. There is some consideration to that through the conservation authority, but there isn't the base data. So we are flying a LiDAR survey in conjunction with Gray Sobel. It's their survey we're tacking on. We're flying the entire municipality at a very reasonable cost, because it's an add-on to the other survey, and that will hopefully help us. The mapping is very important. We don't know where culverts are. I just did go map part of the George Trail on the weekend when I went out for my walk. But I found there was different ages of culverts, and there was no record of where these all were at the town hall. So I think mapping and information is an important part of this plan, because, you know, climate change does have effects. I found one entire fairway encarded underwater at the golf course on Sunday, so, and I'm sure it'll be underwater again tomorrow when it rains. So that water then does spill over into one of our developments. So I think it's very important that we stress that we get good information so that when we build a plan, we're basing it on information that's solid. Thank you.
Councilman, just a quick follow-up in the sense that we talked about water, but also that drugs. And all we're looking at with water is we clear the land, create the ditches, culverts, soils, whatever, make water move in the outside. We used to have swamps and trees and grass and stuff to hold water back. It works both ways in the sense of retention slows water movement down, plus on the sense of the drug side, it also retains that water's low, also that side of that plan, too.
Great comments. Thank you for both of those. On the drug side, county staff recently attended a meeting with Soggy Valley Conservation Authority staff and other stakeholders who have a low-water action plan, and other conservation authorities have a similar action plan, to look at notification. You know, we're used to flooding notifications or heavy rain notifications, but what do we do if we get into an extreme low-water scenario? And in some cases, there might be measures that need to be taken at the municipal or county level. So it's certainly something that we're looking at, and as we get these more variable weather patterns, it's something we need to be calling since across all sectors, for sure.
Well, something, Councilwoman Queen. I'm sure you're going to be looking at plans in other counties that have been written and are underway. I'm wondering whether ecological offsetting, which is practiced in some places like Simcoe, very effectively, if that's going to be included in what you're doing? Are we going to look at that?
Sure. I think that's a great suggestion, and in the report itself, students have made recommendations that, again, the public sector would be a leader in that regard. So we established policy, something to the extent of, you know, if you're going to cut down a tree on county-owned properties, say when we were rebuilding this building, we'd plant at least two trees elsewhere, sort of thing. And that's just a very crude example, but the ecological offsetting is certainly something that county planning staff are currently studying and looking at other examples across the province and across North America. Stephanie, who's not here with us today, has done a lot of research into that topic. So it's something we're exploring internally, and we're starting to talk about with member municipalities to see what that would look like. Certainly, we're supportive in principle. The catch, if you will, is that we don't want it to be perceived as, you know, buying your way out of environmental protection, and you can destroy this feature in exchange for, you know, hopefully establishing it somewhere else, kind of thing. So we're just trying to look at, you know, all the catches, if you will.
Okay. Good discussion. On the motion to receive the two reports at the commence development of a plan, polls in favor? Are there any polls? That's Carrie King, very much so. Number seven D, Marlene is on that. I need a mover, the item on the floor, invited by Councilor Burley, seconded by Councilor Halton. Marlene, you have the floor. And the person on the left.
Thank you again. Good afternoon, it is now. The first report that I've gotten for you this morning relates to changes that we've made to the county's for the planning of this management plan. eventual legislation requires that we do review and update the plan as needed on an annual basis, so we certainly review it every year. We are also required to hold exercises and training, as essentially what we're all aware of right now. And the feedback that we get from those exercises and training is reviewed, and we look at how, what we've learned in those situations might mean we should make changes to our plan. And so today's report is really a result of the past couple of years' worth of changes. Why did we not bring it back earlier? Because sometimes it's not a significant enough change to warrant putting a bylaw before we know that you're going to have more the next time, so that's why we've done it this way. In the chart, no, I should let you know that, first of all, this revised plan has been reviewed by Gray County's Emergency Management Program Committee. The program committee is a committee that we are also legislated to have, as is every municipality. And our committee consists basically of our core emergency control group here in the county. So it's had eyes on it by all of the emergency services, the key directors who have departments that would be responding in an emergency, as well as the C A L and the Warden. The chart, which is attached to the report, outlines all the different changes that we've made, disregarding ones that are just considered to be minor administrative changes. One thing I did notice about the chart versus the plan document this morning that was attached through a link, is that it appeared that although the plan was typed written in one font, when it comes up on the link, it inconveniently transfers to a different font, which is smaller. And so the page numbers in my chart would not have corresponded with what you were looking at through that link. I apologize. And if anyone would like, I can very quickly change those page numbers, because I did go through it just in pen for myself this morning, and I can send that to you. So at this time, rather than going through what the changes are, I'm happy to answer the questions that are being raised.
Very good. Thank you. Questions, Council? I see none. I think people are putting it as straightforward. So I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. Okay. Number seven D, regarding appointing a member of council, or alternates, the Warden. We have one alternate already, correct? Well, we can't move, I think, until we have the actual thing. Oh, this is just to have a second there before, and then later on, we decide who they are. Excellent. So if I could get a mover to put the motion on the floor, moved by Councilor Desai, seconded by Councilor Combs. We're off to the races.
So up until this current term of council, we seem to have been close with enough past wardens, plus a deputy warden, that we had a decent number of alternates. This time, we have virtually no extra alternates. We have our deputy warden, who is also our past warden, so you're the whole package there.
Is that right? Yeah. The whole, the whole thing.
So the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act allows for only the head of council of a municipality to declare an emergency and to take certain actions and make certain orders during an emergency to manage that emergency. So the head of council is a very key role in managing an emergency, and therefore it's really important that we've got enough redundancies in place so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we don't have anyone who can declare that emergency when it's needed. So the report recommends that the county should maintain a roster of a minimum of four authorized alternates to the warden, and they would be as follows. The deputy warden, as per the procedural bylaw, and then the current members of council who are also past Gray County wardens, with the most recent warden being prioritized down to the least recent past warden being prioritized. So if those two methods combined don't produce enough alternates, then this report would propose that we accept interested current county councillors to consent to allow their names to stand. The clerk would throw those names in hot, so to speak, and those names would be drawn during council. The number of required alternates will be drawn, and the order that they are drawn in will be the order that they are prioritized in terms of where they sit in the line of alternates. These appointments will last for the entirety of the term of council, and so if council endorses the recommendations of this report, there will be three alternates that will need to be selected today, and then a bylaw will be put forward for council's consideration, and that bylaw is attached to the report. Very good. Councilwoman Queen?
Questions of clarity? So currently, right now, if there is one emergency in municipalities locally, but if there are two or more or three or more, then it becomes on the lower tier, but an upper tier, if there's an emergency called for both. Right?
No. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. In various counties, they have different little rules like that, and in some, they will say that if there are two or more lower-tier municipalities impacted and declaring emergency, that the upper tier automatically does so. We don't do that.
We usually...
Pardon?
I thought we used to have that in books, huh?
Not since 2003, which is probably when we've been really doing lots with emergency planning. So what we do instead is simply make sure that we reach out to those lower tiers and we kind of hover and wait and see if we're needed. We make sure that they know what we've got available to assist them if needed, but if they aren't calling upon us for much in the way of resources, then there may not really be a need for our involvement in the way of emergency declaration at the upper tier.
So we're going to get to the point where the county would declare? So going back to the time in the early 1990s, when they went to West Gray, you know, the fact that West Gray, Gray Highlands, and Blue Mountains, and I can recall if they didn't make me call it Gray Highlands to declare at that time, but if they did, I was always under the belief that if there was a county declaration among two or more at a lower level, that one of the representatives from the municipality would stay here, or would stay in the municipality, and then the other would go up to the county. So that's not, is that still in place or not in place?
So that's kind of a couple of different questions. So first of all, I just want to clarify, going back to that tornado situation in 2009, we had West Gray declaring an emergency. We had Towne of Blue Mountains later on declaring an emergency, it was a few days after it had happened. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that Gray Highlands ever actually declared an emergency. We simply monitored the situation. We reached out, we're here if you need us, and we were waiting to see if we were going to be needed in such a way that it was going to require lots of resources from not only one municipality, but maybe competing municipalities, because when it becomes a situation where you need to prioritize where the resources are going and it gets complicated like that, that is the perfect situation for the county to become involved and declare an emergency. And then we would look after prioritizing the resources. To your second question, which was if a lower tier declares an emergency and the upper tier, upper tier declares an emergency, the mayor or designate that the mayor chooses will be sent to sit in the emergency control group at the county level to act as the liaison and make sure that there is good communication maintained throughout that whole time. And depending on how many municipalities actually declare, if the county has declared, you could have, you know, several lower-tier representatives sitting around the circle. But it's up to that mayor of each municipality that has declared to decide whether or not they want to go sit in the upper tier, or if they want to stay at home and send...
And so as to our local emergency plans, we've already determined that the mayor would maybe stay and enter this, the deputy mayor would, it was already been known as decided authority in the plan. Right?
You may have decided, right? On the other hand, you may have left it that it's up to the mayor at the time of the emergency, depending on circumstances.
My full point of this was that it was clarity there, but the part here is depending on circumstance, I guess that's why you have four, because if there's a local thing, the mayor, it could be, or the deputy mayor, it could be one of these alternates, but they're dealing with their own emergency and their own, so they wouldn't be able to come here because they're already double-duty, right? So I guess that's why you were having four, so there's that flexibility at losing...
Yes, and there is also certainly the option of if there was an emergency in Hanover, the warden and also a county emergency, it would be up to the warden to decide where he should be, and so perhaps Warden Hicks might decide he's going to sit at the county level while they're prioritizing the resources and so on, because often the county-level emergency will not remain in effect as long as the lower tiers, because they have less responsibility really in the aftermath in getting each municipality back on their feet. If that warden decided to move to the county level and remain as warden rather than sitting at his own municipal control group, then he or she would declare that, we would make note of it, and it would have to be made noted at the local level, too. It just has to be really clear in the documentation, but either thing can happen.
Okay. But just to be clear, Marlene, the determination of the calling of an emergency, evacuation of emergency at the county level is on the basis of the level of help that's being required at the county. And we can't really give that help unless we ourselves declare a state emergency.
That's a general statement. So of course, we have the mutual assistance agreement in place where we can, without declaring emergency, provide assistance, it's when we start have, it's when we need to start prioritizing that assistance among multiple. Or if we were to provide an evacuation center, because we would be using volunteers in our evacuation center, that would be another time when we would declare, but that would be in support of the lower tier.
Okay. So I'll turn to our third panel.
So after my medging yesterday, I have received four names for three positions. So after my nudging yesterday, I have received four names for three positions, for three alternates. So Councilor Mackey, Councilor Woodbury, Councilor Compass, and Councilor Robinson. So we do have three positions on there. I'm not sure if everyone is willing to have their names stand. If everyone is, then we'll just have a vote on three positions before we then draw the names out of the ballot box for the order of rank of alternates. So I'm going to ask, Councilor Mackey?
Yes.
Stand, thank you. Councilor Woodbury?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Compass?
Yes.
And Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Okay. So we will go by show of hands. I will read out the names and I'll go in alphabetical order. And you can vote for up to three people, yes?
It's meant to be pulled out of the hat.
Yep, so we're going to get down to the three first and then we'll get them pulled out of the hat. So right now, we have four.
I think Marlene is saying her understanding of the procedure is that for, if there's more than three names, they will be put into a hat and in the order that they are drawn out, they become the first, second, or, you know.
That's easier, right?
That's right.
That's how it was written? Okay. So I'm going to put these down in here.
Councilor Compass? For clarification, so during this term as warden, you will may eventually become deputy warden.
Yes.
And our current is just going to fade away?
Nope, I'll be the second alternate.
Nice.
So they will bump down into deputy warden?
Much to some people's dismay, I'm sure, but no, I will not fade away.
I will call the first name.
Sorry, I'll call two.
Again. First name, Council Robinson. Second name, Council Compass.
Third name?
Council Woodbury. So these names will be included in the bylaw that will be brought forward at the next meeting.
So we're ready to, we are ready to vote on the motion that's before us. All those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? And the motion is carried. And the bylaw will come forward and the names will be filled in. Thank you, Marlene. Grant, you're up. We're dealing with the memorandum of settlement for Gray Gables. I need a mover to put the item on the table. Moved by Councilor Bart Nicky and seconded by Councilor Hutchinson. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So what we have here is another memorandum of settlement for another collective agreement. And this one is Gray Gables. I'm happy to say that Gray Gables did ask, obviously asked to go to arbitration for this because they did not want to take what the other homes were getting in terms of wages. We do believe that that was as a result of some politics within the union. They were very upset with the decision to close Gray Gables and they weren't all that interested in getting together with us and negotiating. They would rather send it off to arbitration. Once things settled down a little bit here at council and at the county, they knew that they had their jobs. And I asked them if they would come back to the table. They did come back to the table and they did accept the same deal as the other homes received. And I'm happy to say that the legal relations there has improved considerably. And I think that's just a normal outcome of a decision. So you have the full report here and attached are the minutes of settlement. There are a lot of language changes in here that would assist us in scheduling. We're trying to be more flexible with how we give away and trade shifts at the home. We're just trying to get people to stay with Gray Gables and be available for chefs come to work and be taking care of the residents. So this amount of wage increase also includes the addition of benefits for orthotics. And it also includes the three cents of uniform allowance per hour that the other two homes have already accepted. So I'm happy to say that it's, I think it's a fair deal, it's a good deal. And this is the sixth union who have, who have accepted the 1.61 wage increase that was directed by the county council. And I think that is excellent. We, we continue to negotiate. It seems we're negotiating with the union all of the time. And that's not a bad thing because it keeps us talking and it keeps me coming and seeing the county council and you know what's going on. So I would ask that you support this, this recommendation to ratify this agreement on our end. Gray Gables staff have already ratified the agreement with the assistance of Opsi, Senate meetings itself.
Questions, Council? Comments? It's on the motion to receive and ratify under what? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Senator G. Senator B. The Niagara Sartre Commission representative, clerk will take over. Oh, we'll have to wait for names accordingly. Do you want the motion first?
Yes.
Okay, so put the item on the table. Councilor Mel, seconded by Councilor Keating.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Notice we received late last week from the Niagara Sartre Commission that our current representative, Councilor McQueen's appointment is up at the end of May. And they are looking for some names to be brought forward by council for Gray County council members to be considered as a public appointment to the Niagara Sartre Commission. In order to be eligible for this appointment, you have to have Niagara Sartre van within your municipality. So that covers six of the nine municipalities and excludes Hanover, West Gray, and South Gate. So the appointment is for a three-year term. And the letter from the Niagara Sartre Commission was attached to the report. I will note that previous years, we have had to submit up to three. And this time, we have the option of at least three individuals putting their names forward. And I'm happy to say that we have four names that I received from council members that indicated their interest to put their names forward. We, as the county, do not make the decision. The decision is an appointment by the lieutenant governor. So what will happen after this, if council supports the names going forward, then the clerk's department will send each of those applicants a link to complete the application online. We will forward the resolution to the Niagara Sartre Commission for their information. And then the appointment will be made at that level. And we will be notified through our commissioner of this. So the four names that have been submitted to you are Councilor Mackey, Councilor McQueen, Councilor Desai, and Councilor Compass.
Let's see your hand. I'm questioning, I'm looking for questions.
So if council is happy with those four representatives putting their name forward for consideration by the commission, then we will ensure that that information gets to the commission.
Fair enough? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I may. Other business, if there are any other business. Man, I'm playing down the back there. You have some other business?
Thank you very much. The other business is in relation to an application opening up to the federal government. You may have seen in the news this week and last week about the local immigration partnership application that we're submitting. So when we looked at the work that we've done through New Gray over the last 15 months, we realized that there's a lot more work to be done. And we now have the evidence to tell us what work that is. And at the same time, there was an opportunity to commit from the federal government to submit a funding application for a five-year project to do a local immigration partnership. And that is an indirect service, so it's not direct services to newcomers, but it means working with our employers, working with our community agencies to ensure that the support and the capacity is here in the community to be able to welcome newcomers to the region. So when we looked around at who our stakeholders are in the community, who could be, you know, helping newcomers and helping our communities, we realized that almost every single one of them are either Bravers or Bruce Gray. So it didn't make sense for us to be doing this alone. So we put a request out to Bruce Kami to see if they would come on more than partner with us in this application, and they have agreed. So that was the news that was picked up last week when they went to their council about becoming partners with us in this application. So we are not talking publicly about it to the media because we haven't even got the application in yet. It doesn't go in until Tuesday, April 30th of this year. And if we're successful, it's going to be some time before we hear the project would start until April 1st, 2020. So this is a long way out, but we're getting the groundwork done now to do what we can and hopefully be successful in this. So I'm just going to give you a quick little synopsis of what a local immigration partnership does. And then we just wanted you to be aware that that application is going in and it's fully funded. So at this point, there is no, no cost to the federal budget. But a local immigration partnership, it's a mechanism through the federal government that supports the development of community-based partnerships and planning around needs of newcomers. So its main intent is to engage different stakeholders from the community so that we can have locally driven strategic planning processes that include employers, school boards, health centers, networks, border trade, levels of government, professional associations, and the list goes on and on. So the entire intent of it is to foster a systematic approach to engage someone programs and other institutions that we can better integrate newcomers because we know we don't have an issue attracting, it's the retention part. That's where we really fall off when we look at what the federal government is trying to do to attract immigrants and newcomers to a region. When it comes to that integration into our communities and the settlement services, they're just not here. That is a huge gap for us. So the retention is key. This is the second part of an application that the federal government did put out. So there's a phase one and a phase two. We are not applying for phase one, but we did go in support with Y M C A of Bravers to put in an application for that. So that would see actual settlement services if they were funded, which again, won't be until 2020 if that is the case. So there are two applications going in. One went in two weeks ago for that deadline. The other one will be going in this coming Tuesday and hopefully it'll be back. That was some good news in the fall, but we just wanted you to be aware that that is happening.
So Savannah, does this application process require that council enliven?
It does not.
Okay. For information?
Yes.
Good? Thank you very much. Any other other business? Council McQueen?
I'd like to, Mr. Warden, I, Council. Just FYI, the county along with Gray Highlands circulated a document from the A D C with regards to reconstruction of a particular road in Central County through the year of 26, 27. And with this, comments because it's bordering on Gray County. And just briefly, if I can make it, that this is with regards to the closing up Central County Road 91 that is connected to our Gray Road 31 in Gray County. We, as Gray County, set up a public meeting on May 9th from 6 to 8 at the Oski Community Center to receive comments and suggesting that maybe other next county also be in May. But after communication, we add it through our county council agenda. So then if there's any comments from this side, we can make those. It has to be invited to 24. And just briefly, this is not for an amendment. This is comments to be received by the A D C to, to the commission whether they even consider accepting it as an amendment. And the amendment is, is the proposed closing of County Central County Road 91 with the next degree of clearly one side road to the door. And they have, they have to give you an amendment because they're going to, there is a natural protective area of the Niagara Sartre Plan. So they have to go through this process. So anyway, it's FYI, and it's something that has been in place for those who maybe don't know much about it, it's been in place for over 10 years as we've been trying to walk through a Niagara Corrie proposal that was to the north side of the current site. And found one of the road and folks, you know, the major artery that, that leads to Gray County and to Integra County. There was, there is a report about 2003 that county council at that time along Central County adopted was the realignment of Gray Road 31 and Central County Road 91 in the sense of coming and going of gray and Central County. So it certifies in the face of that particular proposal that was supported all the time. A lot of times, a lot of times has passed, so through this whole process, there has never really been a public opportunity to make comments. And this is when we finally in place the tourism of a process. So again, that's May 9th at the Oski Community Center from 6 to 8 P M. And I will be asking for that.
Thank you. Any other, other business? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any notices of motion? Councilor Savannah?
Yes, um, the last, maybe the whole meeting, we passed the resolution, which we compared by council today, that we request the government and Ontario to review whether taxation using the current value assessment is achieving its policy objective. And we are also inviting the Municipal Assessment Corporation to come here. And with regards to that, the Town of Blue Mountains is happy to report that actually when we got back from the county meeting, lo and behold, in the provincial budget, there was almost exactly the same wording in that they are going to review current value assessment system. So with regard to that, the Town of Blue Mountains has retained the Municipal Tax Advisory Group to examine the shifts and trends within Gray County. To complete this analysis, M TAC has requested access to the Municipal Connect database through Gray County. So we could look at shifts in Gray County. And I know my staff is working with staff at the county to see if that's possible. However, it may need council direction. So I'd like to give notice of motion that if we can't resolve this at the staff level, I will be bringing a motive, a motion at the next meeting to get council to approve that access.
Very good. Any other notices of motion? Seeing none, then I will look for, okay. Moved by Councilor Mel, seconded by Councilor Early. We are. All those in favor? Any opposed? You're worrying about, oh, the way you're posing it.